Right now, but it's all depending on.
I think it was hard on.
Always longer than it is.
Check into that definitely.
I will.
Chris, I'll talk.
I bet you.
I'll just skip it there, sure.
How are you?
You doing good? How are you?
So wait on Jen. Thanks Jen.
Thank you Jen.
You guys ready to go?
Yeah.
Ready?
Yes sir.
All right, we'll go ahead and bring the Board of Commissioners meeting to order, August the ninth, twenty twenty-two. I want to welcome everybody this morning. We've got Marlon Wiedler here from Sunlight Chapel Church in Washington for prayer. Come up to the podium. Morning.
Thank you. Let's pray. Father, we thank you for another beautiful morning you blessed us with. And God, as we meet here this morning, we thank you for our country, for our nation, for the way you have blessed our nation. Thank you for our town. We pray for each one of these men here this morning who are... May you give peace and comfort and joy as we go through the day. And God, we commit this meeting to you. We commit each person to you. May you have your way. We pray this all through Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thanks Marlon. Appreciate it.
As Michael mentioned, that's been... We had an executive session on July twenty-six, ten thirty a.m. Advertised for the specific purposes stated therein, and that was the only thing that was discussed. If there are any questions, please direct that to myself or to this board. Thank you.
Thanks Brian.
All right, we had the meeting minutes from July the twenty-sixth meeting. Gentlemen, had a chance to look those over review.
Yeah, I did not see any changes.
Nor did I.
Look for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Got a motion by Nathan Gabhart?
Second.
Second by Ron Aron, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, Highway. Morning Chris. Just want to say there was no Highway meeting this morning, correct?
Correct. Guess the first thing on there is some LPA vouchers I've got, I'll give to you. I've got three of them.
And what are they? All right, I got three LPA claim vouchers here. First one's for Lockmilr Group. Canterbury Road Phase Four. For engineering. The amount of forty-six thousand eight hundred and twenty-five dollars and thirty-one cents. Eighty percent reimbursable, thirty-seven thousand four hundred and sixty dollars and twenty-five cents. Second one's from Lockmilr Group, Canterbury Road Phase Four and Five, engineering. An amount of twelve hundred dollars even. Eighty percent reimbursable, nine hundred and sixty dollars. Third one's from Davis County Real Water. Canterbury Road Phase Four and Five. An amount of fifty-eight thousand four hundred and thirty-eight dollars and seventy-four cents with eighty percent reimbursable, forty-six thousand dollars. Forty-six thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars and ninety-nine cents. Gentlemen, have any questions on those?
No.
If not, look for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Got a motion by Nathan Gabhart?
Second.
Second by Ron Aron, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, go ahead Chris.
Okay. So part of the project updates then. As we're talking about Canterbury Road. They are, Monday, they're gonna start stabilizing some soil. The dirt part, it's between four hundred and four fifty north. And then after that, they'll put some stone on it. And then they'll start doing some blacktop overlays. Basically, September sixth, probably Labor Day, right after Labor Day. They're gonna start concrete paving, that's the plan now. And so they'll connect everything that's not paved from just north of two hundred north to four fifty north. So the whole section at least be paved all the way through and you won't be driving through there. Go through the mud and the dirt and the potholes. The construction, so that's a big plus. Yeah, so September sixth, they're gonna do the concrete paving and connect it all. It won't be a completed project, but at least the traffic will be able to get through. So that was the update on that. The bridge project. I do have, we had agreed to go with the bid that we had. But now I've got the paperwork for you guys assigned for the milestone. Bid that we wanted to move on with. This is, this is the same thing like you guys signed the agreement with milestone, but then I know we had said that I can sign any change orders instead, but the initial one needs to be the commissioners. Right there is the. That's just the milestone.
Guys have any questions on this?
No, I think nothing's changed since.
If not, look for a motion to approve the... What bridge number is that again?
One fifty-five.
Yeah. For milestone, Bridge one fifty-five contract. Got motion by Nathan Gabhart?
Second.
Second by Ron Aron, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And I think a couple meetings ago, I told you guys how we were getting caught up on everything, like dust control and wrapping things up. I think Nathan seen the other day was talking like the Glendale Road project, you know, they... I've had like five dates that they were gonna pave it, and each time it rains or something, that date continually gets pushed back. We were, about a month ago, we were really ahead and we were finishing up on our dust control and now with these rains, we're really behind, so. We still got a couple chip seal dust controls we gotta do, and then we're looking to get into our couple weeks of doing mainline chip seal for the county and September, starting our paving overlays. We're in the process of tiling new county roads, trying to upgrade gravel roads to hard surface roads. The first step is tiling, so we're in the process of doing that. I met with Tom Boyd yesterday about the four-eight parking area that we've committed to helping on and he's gonna do the grade work and get that done. I think we got a little bit of work to do on the airport project to help get that completed yet. If the weather cooperates here, we'll get the rest of the stone on it. I think that's about all I've got on the update of what we do. I've got a, I do have something. The clean sweep pesticide disposal would be August eighteenth at the Highway Department. And there is a flyer. I think I had reached out to you guys. We talked about doing it, but it's just a, it's an Indiana pesticide clean sweep project designed to collect and dispose of suspended, canceled, banned, unusable, open, unopened, or just unwanted pesticides, herbicides, insecticides, rodicides, fungicides, et cetera. And we're hosting that at the county highway in the truck garage. They just needed a building with a concrete floor.
Right.
And a shelter over it. It was Sarah Brackney, Purdue Extension. She had reached out and asked if we had a place to do that, so we don't have to.
It's just their service is done at your facility, right?
Yeah, we're just providing the services from, actually it is from, I don't know if I got the time. Don't think I have the time. Oh, nine to three P.M., nine A.M. to three P.M. And ours is August eighteenth, but there is one like the sixteenth, seventeenth at different counties. So that'd be next Thursday. Other than that, I don't have anything, unless you guys have any questions.
Is there anything, Chris?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you guys.
Thanks Chris, appreciate it. Yeah, Davis County Economic Development, City Community Coordinator contract summary. Morning Bryant.
Good morning. How are you gentlemen doing?
Good.
Good.
Good morning Bryant.
Yeah, long time no see. What, was it your last meeting, I think I was here? Hopefully you guys had a chance to view the video since then, take a look at that online. See the star of the show, Nathan Gabhart, in his debut appearance there. So yeah, thank you guys for having me back. What I'm here to talk about today, you all should have received a contract summary from us and a proposed contract for the community coordinator position, which is a requirement of the Hoosier Enduring Legacy Program. So just to give a little bit of a background, I touched on this a couple weeks ago in my presentation. But in the fall of this past year, we were designated as one of nine Hoosier Enduring Legacy Program, or HELP, communities. HELP is the successor program for the Stellar Communities Program essentially, so Okra put a pause on Stellar during COVID, so in twenty twenty. And then in, I believe, August of twenty twenty-one, they announced HELP, and that it's going to take on Stellar. Basically, borrow the principles of Stellar, apply them to communities, how do we identify legacy projects that we can use our ARPA dollars, other resources to help the community recover from the COVID-nineteen pandemic and come out stronger, right? So we were one of nine communities. Our cohort is actually starting, as a matter of fact, today, this afternoon. Nathan's gonna be joining us for a meeting to talk about these first steps and getting started with the process. We are going to be in the cohort with the city of Bensines and with Dubois County and Jasper. So our application was really kind of a joint application between Davies County and the city of Washington. Davies County is the quote-unquote grant recipient for HELP. And therefore, as part of the program, we have to have a community coordinator. Okra is requiring this of each of their HELP communities to drive the process. So a paid staff person that is responsible for coordinating between state agencies, the local team driving the process, the community, so on and so forth. So what you have in front of you today is a proposed contract for the county to take on half of that cost. Yesterday, I presented to the city council for them to take on half of the cost, so a joint effort between the city and the county. That position would be housed under our organization, so their office would be with us. But they would be doing work for the city and the county through this process. We thought it made sense in talking with several of you all, several county councilmen, that it made sense to house it under our position to make sure, one, I mean, we're all doing this kind of stuff anyway. The four pillars that HELP is based around is so broadband, economic vitality, quality of place, and public health, right? So all things that we're involved in to some degree, maybe with a ladder of public health. But we felt it made sense to house it under our position because there's a clear chain of command, we're working on these things anyway, and there's no confusion as to the reporting and how that may work. So with that said, I'd be happy to answer any questions on the contracts. Go from there, so.
Has the city approved?
The city, so there was actually some confusion. The city did not get it on their agenda yesterday, so I called the mayor, I noticed it yesterday afternoon when I was looking through the agenda. I was actually on there for another topic. The mayor said, hey, we'd bring it up. They, the mayor and Alan Brown and the city attorney have all seen it and were making a few suggestions. But the city gave their approval yesterday to follow up with a contract in the next meeting, so in a couple weeks to finalize it. So, yeah.
Who wrote the contract?
We actually just borrowed it, the language from our existing contract with you all.
Grant, you reviewed it?
I have looked at it, and my thought was if, I mean, we wanna be second was, I mean, as far as, if they're gonna approve it, then it'll come here, is that right?
Well, I mean, the thing, I mean, it is a county application. Like you guys are on, like Michael Taylor is the signatory, he had to sign, you know, for us to submit the application. I mean, the city gave their approval yesterday, with the exception of, I mean, basically just following the process, yeah.
Yeah, I think we were...
I'd rather not wait a couple weeks if...
I think the motion would be to approve contingent upon the city approval. Obviously, if the city backs out, then you have to go back to the drawing board, but...
Yeah. Yeah, I'm, yeah, that's a good idea, Nathan. We just, we haven't posted the position obviously without having these items finalized. Just because we have to make sure there's city and county buy-in for what we're doing here. So I did fail to mention, so at the end of this process, Okra is going to match the county and/or the city, right? Or a combination thereof, up to a million dollars towards implementing one of these legacy projects identified through this process. So it's a one-to-one match of your ARPA dollars towards one of these projects, so.
Now, we're rounding the budget for this twenty thousand dollars, have we talked to the council and see where that's coming out of yet? Have you talked to the council about that?
I have not, I have not.
Oh, is it?
Yeah.
Is that out of Arpa money or?
Yeah, I believe so. We've had a number of conversations on this topic with, you know, Tony Duncions on the board as well, so. Yeah, it's coming out of the ARPA. ARPA dollars is what I recall, but yeah, everyone is in agreement. In order to get, obviously, we've got selected, in order to get the million dollars, there's, this isn't anything that we get to do, it's something we have to do.
Yeah.
City's willing to split it, and then we get the Okra reimbursement back, so.
Yeah. Yeah, so it's twenty-five thousand dollars per year. The contract is for a period of two years. The first year being going through the planning process, the last year for implementation. It's a commitment to Okra for two years. Then after that, we'll reevaluate, you know, have we done our work, have we wrapped it up? Great, we close it out. If not, you know, then we kind of see what those next steps are. This individual's also gonna be taking on a lot of our quality place work, I mean, that's what this is around. So it'll be a huge help for us, projects like the commons, trails, housing, things like that, they're gonna be that right-hand in helping us move all of that forward. So it's a good thing for us, we need the capacity to move these projects forward to sustain our progress. The twenty thousand dollar match from Okra will come back to the county. I've been talking with Jen and Okra on that as far as how that works. I believe they're actually gonna be sending a contract, is that right, Jen? So the twenty thousand dollars in terms of match from Okra to cover part of this expense in year one will come to the county. If the city, assuming the city does participate, you know, then what we have in the contract is that the county would then reimburse the city for half of that cost, right? It's only fair if they're taking on half of the expense that they, half of that reimbursement back. So that first year all in, Davies County would be fifteen thousand, city of Washington fifteen thousand, and then twenty-five thousand in subsequent years.
So yeah, so I mean, I'd make a motion to approve contention on the city approving their contract.
Got a motion by Nathan Gabhart?
Second.
Second by Ron Aron, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thanks Brian.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Bryant, did you want to talk about the broadband-ready community?
I'd be happy to, but I don't wanna step out of whichever order you guys want me to address.
Okay, I didn't know if you were leaving, but you're...
I'll hang around.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll hang around.
All right, we got the MJ Intern Stop Loss Disclosure.
This paperwork is what Paul Williams was in here a few weeks ago. Already talked to you guys, you've already made the motion, this is just the actual paperwork to get it all finished and completed.
Guys have any more questions on that, it was in your packet?
No questions here.
If not, look for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Got a motion by Nathan Gabhart?
Second.
Second by Ron Aron, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. There's no signature page or anything, Jen?
Page four, I think.
I knew it was gonna print somewhere, there it is. All right, the second thing, or another, next one on there is Emar Koshir. Looks like they have extended that date again until October the twelfth, twenty twenty-two. Just look for a motion to approve that date.
So moved.
Got a motion by Nathan Gabhart?
Second.
Second by Ron Aron, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, move back to the resolution regarding the broadband.
Back up. All right, so yes, what you all have in front of you is a proposed resolution certifying Davies County as a broadband-ready community. So obviously broadband is no, you know, you guys aren't any strangers to broadband with the establishment of the Infrastructure Development Zone this past year, the partnership with RTC Communications, and the opportunity that's open to any broadband providers that qualify for the standards in our Infrastructure Development Zone. This is really more of a formality, what we're doing today, what we're proposing to do today. The broadband-ready designation is a designation the state legislature put in place several years ago. Basically outlining the steps very clearly as to how broadband projects are to take place in the county and streamlining that process. So Jill Campbell in our office has been working with Chris, Chris left with the Highway Department. Their team has been working with Dale, I believe, with the county as well. Part of the requirement is you have to have the ability to do electronic permit filing for right-of-ways, right-of-way permits. So Dale was phenomenal, Nathan helped us with that, we appreciate that Nathan, and the Highway Department. So we have that set up to where anyone that qualifies that wants to do a broadband project, whether it's RTC Communications or any of our other providers, if they're doing a project in the county, they contact Chris, they can file their permit electronically. So that's one step. Another is that there has to be a single point of contact for all broadband development projects. And then lastly, there has to be a resolution stating that you're doing those few things. And then we will complete the application to the Indiana Broadband Office to become a broadband-ready community. Martin County, Pike County, Knox County, I believe Dubois, all around us are broadband-ready. So like I said, this is a formality, but it does outline the process very clearly and sends a message to broadband providers as to what the steps are. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Guys have anything for Bryant? Yeah, appreciate it Bryant.
There we go. One thing I would suggest, just we didn't actually specify in the resolution who the point of contact is. That doesn't have to be specified in the resolution, but it does in the application. It's entirely up to you guys, but I would maybe suggest that it is our office. Just if someone is interested in doing a broadband project, they contact us, then we funnel them to the appropriate agency at that point. When they're ready for a permit, obviously they'll go to the Highway Department. I'm listed as the broadband contact with the Indiana Broadband Office anyway, so I felt it makes sense for someone with our office to serve in that role, so.
I have an issue with that, do you?
Sounds good.
Okay.
All right. Appreciate it Bryant.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yep. You will, if you're all right with it, need to approve this, I would ask that you approve this today, the resolution, yeah.
You guys had a chance to look at all this resolution, right?
Yep.
Look for a motion to approve the resolution for a broadband-ready community.
Yeah, so moved.
Got a motion by Nathan Gabhart? Second by Ron Aron, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you Bryant.
Thank you gentlemen.
All right, we got WTH agreement here. We don't have Dan Eaton today, we just have Dan Eaton, we have to talk about WTH.
Thing I would say with that is...
Go ahead, go ahead Grant.
At times, there's been pieces of the services with WTH that we wanted to terminate, and so we've asked them to include language with thirty-day notice. Julian, Highway Department had asked me about that. Sometimes we think we need it, and then we don't end up using it, and so we've maybe taken off a piece of the services and don't have to pay that fee anymore. I guess I would, I didn't see it in the packet, but I would just make sure we've got a, that allows us to terminate with thirty days' notice.
Guys have any more questions on this WTH?
No, I do not.
Ron?
Is this the application from CoreLogic that we're talking about, or is this something different?
It's just the fee schedule on electronic app and data, and...
What's in my packet from WTH is an application from CoreLogic requesting county GIS, and there's an agreement in there. But they pay at the end and we get some of it back. So is that what we're approving? I have no problem with it, I just wanna make sure I'm straight, what we're talking about.
Looks like a total fee of seven hundred and fifty dollars and then a two hundred and fifty dollar reimbursement back to the county.
Yeah, it looks like the letter page is from CoreLogic.
Yeah. It is actually, it is an application then. Yep, so it's seven hundred and fifty dollar fee, CoreLogic, then WTH reimburses the county two hundred and fifty dollars, does that sound right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Of course I know.
Okay, so we got a, we actually got an application here with WTH and CoreLogic. To charge a seven hundred and fifty dollar fee and then reimburse the county two hundred and fifty dollars, that's a seven hundred and fifty dollar fee. Look for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Got a motion by Nathan Gabhart?
Second.
Second by Ron, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Just note that they're out of Florida, and I think they're helping with developments, so it's probably good news for the county.
Sounds like good news.
They're looking at something.
All right, you gentlemen have anything else for the board?
No, I do not.
I do not.
Anybody else in the audience have anything for the board? If not, like to, look for a motion to pay payroll, pay claims, and adjourn.
So moved.
Got a motion by Nathan Gabhart.
Second.
Second by Ron Aron, all on paper.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thanks, everyone. Appreciate it.